This is the meeting of the three meeting of the regular council of the city of Ellsworth for Monday, September the ninth uh twenty twenty four. Let's go and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry if this goes, a meeting of the public hearing today is what it is, five o'clock during the meetings at four to five thirty. Um so a new roll call, Jessica.
Here.
Tyler. All right, come on in. Darcy Hanson.
Here.
Erin Thompson. Don Hanson.
Yes.
All right, at this point, we're gonna open the public comment. Uh we're gonna need a motion to open the public comment. There are two sections, we'll keep them separate. First section is revenue neutral, second section is the budget comment, and then we'll close the public comment. And then we'll pass, hopefully pass a couple resolutions, then we'll go into adjourn the um public hearing, and then we'll probably have a few minutes, and then we'll we'll start up the regular uh meeting for the city of Ellsworth. So do I have a motion to open the public comment?
I'll make a motion and open up the comments.
I'll sign it.
Right, Councilor Hanson has made a motion to open the public comments. Uh Darcy has seconded that. Hearing now also favor say aye.
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 Closed, our motion carries. All right, would anybody from the public like to come forward to speak about revenue neutral rate? Go ahead Karen.
Well, first of all, I guess I wonder why you're raising it when you practically ignore the whole situation out there. Um nobody does anything for the can renovation. Uh when you put in those houses, it was to get more taxes for you, and all you do is raise our taxes. You keep raising our taxes and raising our taxes. We don't get our streets graded anymore. We don't have police service. We have nothing out there, except you guys want our money.
So thank you Karen. Anybody wanna make a comment? Anita, go ahead.
I would just like somebody to explain the the notice that we got. I'm not sure I understand.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The notice that you got is a requirement that the state has, the county clerk, a lot allergic to what we have set the ceiling at. So the city council has not approved any rate at the ninety-four mil rate, it's simply to set the maximum that they can go. So right now, this is your public hearing to tell us, tell them whether you want to leave it where it's at or lower it, and then council will tell us the staff to follow up.
A brief description of revenue neutral.
Yeah, the revenue neutral rate is the state statute's way of trying to ensure that voters are informed about their taxes. So they came up with a mathematical formula to set the revenue neutral rate based on the cities that got assessed value. And then they use that mathematical formula to, so the current revenue neutral rate that's on your sheet, I think it's around seventy-four mils, it's a change. That is, uh if city council were to choose to leave it there, that would be maintain the same taxes that you had this year as, or next year as opposed to this year. Um any town or city that chooses to uh discuss the, or to, that's why they, uh back in July, city council said they had the intention of raising the revenue neutral rate because we're proposing raising it, but that you, we have to do a public discussion first with you before they will make the final approval. So nothing is set in stone yet, then ninety-four mils is just simply the the ceiling that uh they've set themselves.
Any other public comment, revenue neutral? Come on up sir.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Dale. I don't know that I have comments, just questions. The basis for raising our uh proposed tax mill levy to increase our revenue at the city level is about thirty-eight percent. Is that based on anything, or is that a shot in the dark?
No.
No, what?
Go ahead, go ahead, just.
No, it isn't. So for years, the city has been supplementing the general fund used in water sewer revenue. And water sewer revenue is supposed to be used for water sewer infrastructure and investment. And so what's been happening is they've been taking that revenue, or they've been taking the revenue that they would have had on the water sewer, they've been transferring it to the general fund to make capital improvement purchases and things of that nature. The problem with doing that is that you, you artificially inflate the general fund. And so uh while at one end, the benefit is, is that we maintain your tax rate for years. The downside is, is that's money that we're not using to invest in the water sewer construction.
Okay, that explanation doesn't make sense to me, and I'm not gonna say that I'm a sharp stool in the shit, but are you looking at reductions in other part of your budgets? If if all we're doing is trading where we're labeling the dollars, what's the basis? What are we reducing?
In accounting terms, that's very important because the water sewer, that is a enterprise fund, ID a private business. So those fees are supposed to be only used for water sewer. Now, state law allows you to transfer those, but it's not generally an accepted practice because we should be using those water sewer funds for infrastructure. Now, where it's becoming mission critical is our water sewer infrastructure is old. It is dilapidated. We have a loan due violation in the state that council and I have confronted. We got a ten point two million dollar project that I have been ordered to uh work on. Uh we do have two point six million dollars in reduction of that revenue, but that's still seven point six million dollars. And that's a lot when our entire city general fund is three point six million, and our water sewer budget is a two million.
So if you took the thirty-eight percent that you're, I guess I hope your forecasting are going to be that one it represents, how many dollars does that represent?
I mean, I think it's around. I would have to get back with you on that. I haven't calculated.
Wouldn't you need to know that?
Yeah.
Seems like, yeah, we had it at our last meeting where one mill was equivalent to
Nineteen thousand.
Okay, that's this question. I think you're asking, one mill is nineteen thousand. So if you go up ten mills, you're going up hundred and ninety thousand.
So in general, you're looking to decrease or redirect the money that should have been going into call it a sinking fund or whatever for water and sewer, so that you had money on hand to make the repairs. Now you're saying, okay, so we'll put that money in our general fund now if this level is approved.
Yeah.
So how will we have any assurance that the city is really going to spend the money as the state, I guess, really?
So the the the, because we've been supplementing the general fund with the water sewer, that means the rest of the general fund has been underfunded. So when we put a stop to that two years ago, now council has a better idea of how short the our our general fund departments are. It's a police department, that's our fire department, that's our streets department, that's the administrative department, and that's our uh CID.
So somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars is what you're kinda looking at.
And uh right now, our vehicles are uh, aside from the police department, they at least got a couple of new vehicles over the last couple of years, but aside from that, most of our vehicles are old. Um most of our vehicles are ten to twenty years old. Our fleet is aging, so that's one problem. And what that does to us is that it doesn't allow us to do projects.
And I'm not disputing that.
Yeah.
What I would say is, I've lived in Ellsworth for a long time. We had one patrol car when I went to high school. How many do we have now?
Six.
Who?
Six.
And what's the population now to compare that back to nineteen seventy?
Uh I don't know. I'm gonna guess we're smaller than we were then. So we've increased our fleet.
The question is why? What are we doing that we couldn't do? One was ridiculous, so I'm not saying anything other than so you're going to get back to the city with your expectations of what you're going to do with that quarter of a million dollars.
That's correct.
And give us an actual benchmark or something to gauge what you're doing as compared to where we've been.
The goal is to get things fixed. So some problems that we have, like off of Third Street, Third Street, we've got a collapsing, we've got a collapsing covert that I'm concerned about.
You know, I I would agree with you wholeheartedly that Ellsworth's infrastructure is in horrible shape. I mean, it is. What I am kind of curious about is, how will we compare with other cities, similar population, those kinds of demographics? The tax base, and how will we compare?
I I like to bring something up that needs to be mentioned. That's too loud, isn't it?
I I don't know, I have, I I can hear you fine.
Uh and offense to the city council and especially Dustin, when I was on the city council thirty years ago, the fire department had over a hundred thousand dollars from something in an equipment fund account in case we needed a new fire truck. The city street department had a code of fund account, so they did buy new pickups, a duck truck, the police had it, water sewer had it. With the, uh to be politically correct, the previous administrators that we have had here basically robbed Peter of a pay fall, those who took money out of the sewer fund, which is not supposed to be allocated into our general fund to balance the general fund, saying, hey, look at me. I balanced it with no tax increases. Well, now, we have zero in our camp for a new fire truck. We have zero basically for a truck truck. We have zero for a new police car. Any expenditure that would come up that would be out of the ordinary, we have no money in a good fund to pay for any of that. And the simple reason is, in all of the past, that money was moved over from water sewer to keep the general fund down, and then now we have inflation to deal with. So I put a pencil to it, and six years ago versus today, we could do half as many streets recircu say as what we did before for the sake of that money.
And we were behind then.
We were behind then. So what I'm saying is, it's our money too.
Yeah, no, I I bet. I want people to understand if you may like the golf course, you may not like the golf course. You may love the library, but there's other people that don't like the library. Summer recreation program, all the kids need a summer recreation program and everything, the swimming pool, everyone used to swim in the pool.
And heaven forbid, we have a truck out here on one fifty-six, a bus full of kids, and they have to be life watched out here. Well, the city council didn't do anything to update the airport, and all these poor kids out here died because we couldn't vacuum out of here for clock watch. So it's one of them deals. Is this more important than this, or is this more important than that? It all depends on what you're interested. Yeah, we've saved a lot of money in our taxes to go way down. We redirect the public golf course, the city library. Don't fix any streets, let all the sewers collapse and send out with it, but I can't personally.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
But yeah, you are, because you're asking, what are we gonna do with the money? That money that we're talking about, that quarter of a million dollars, I would say probably, what, a hundred thousand or more, will probably end up in equipment fund. A new fire truck is a half million dollars. And our fire truck we have now, our main one is twenty-five years old.
Ninety-six.
It's a one ninety.
I think it's nineteen ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay, I'm close, okay. So anyway, let's say your particular house catches on fire and our lighter truck breaks down. Well, the city didn't have enough equipment to put the fire out, and my husband did. Or you need a cop in the middle of the night at two o'clock. If we have two patrol officers, one goes in at eight, gets off at four, one goes in four, gets off at eight, and then something happens in two or three o'clock in the morning, you have to wake him up, get him to come over to your house. It's a little late there. So that's why you had extra officers, because of forty hour piece plus, we want everything covered twenty-four seven because you don't know. So that's where law and money is going.
Well, and I'm not disputing there's a need for that. What I'm saying is, is show us the basis for how you've arrived at your need.
Well, a lot of it is pricing. So I've got the budget in front of me now. The prices are going up. So if you talk to anyone in my department heads who has talked
But inflation wasn't thirty-eight percent this last year.
No.
But what is thirty-eight percent is the not, the the water sewer fund not supplementing the general fund. I I, and what I think, my my takeaway from what you shared and the rest, because we had a city government that was unprincipled or not at least following state statutes or whatever where where we're at today. My question is, is was there um as part of the audit that the city has done annually, were there recommendations made to the city?
Yes, and not regarding R and R. Their recommendations were to make sure that we polish up our our uh ours processes internally.
Yeah.
And they don't, they're, they they don't make policy decisions or make policy recommendations on that stuff, other than, you know, don't mix R and R, don't mix the funds.
My suggestion is, the thirty-seven percent really is high because we had six years or at least that long not where we didn't adequately provide. So it looks like a big jump when in fact where it really amounts to is a plain ketchup for salmon.
That's kinda.
That's the message I would be.
Yeah, that's the message that we're trying to put out, like that equipment fund has disappeared. So let's say this year we had to buy a fire truck, police car, and a duck truck. Five to a half million dollars. You're talking almost seven hundred thousand dollars just in those three things. Hope we don't need it, but if we gradually build those equipment funds back up, when we have that emergency, that's what this budget is gonna help us with.
The things you might contemplate as you're putting together a pro, why we should do this. I'm pretty sure Ellsworth has good fire rates for insurance.
Yes.
Because of our fire department.
That's correct.
That's a reason to invest or maintain what we have that people should appreciate because your homeowner's insurance would be considerably higher, potentially, if you did not have the fire department that we do have. And we're lucky, we have a volunteer fire department, so we don't pay a lot for salary on that.
Yeah, and we don't have to pay for the labor of those guys doing the fancy equipment down there.
Permission to interject, Councilor. Um there's some other bigger things too. Our comp plan is twelve years old.
Our what?
Our comprehensive plan, we're supposed to renew every year, is thirteen years old now.
Yeah.
Our hat was last done in two thousand fourteen. Our water sewer infrastructure is seventy to eighty years old, depending on part of town. Our um our, with our strategic plan um that I've been working with the staff, capital improvement plan, et cetera, we didn't, I didn't have one when I got here. When I first got here, because we were not investing heavily in IT, we got hit with a ransomware attack. Um if we don't start confronting these problems, the things are gonna get more and more expensive. Six of the eight projects that I helped council close out over the last two years have doubled in price from when I first, when I first got here because we put them off. And so the question is, really, what is the end game? What do we want to do as a city?
You come on in.
And so, come on in. So um yes, the thirty-eight percent is a jump, but what's even more alarming to me is because we put off doing, closing out these projects, how much we paid for each one. The Douglas was seven years old, the sidewalks was five years old, two of the, two of our companies paid double what was originally tagged in it from what I could gather.
So I I'm not really here to complain somewhat.
No, no, this is.
Yeah, people facts, but they get feeling good about what you're doing.
And I, I think people need to understand, it is a tank, this is an increase, like, but we all, we all pay taxes.
Oh, I'm sure of it.
So when we said, yeah, because.
For tonight's meeting was not.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at the same increases that all.
Okay, right.
Yeah, so I think we didn't sit down and say, let's go, we could have gone a hundred, and we said, no, we're not, you know, it doesn't seem to have a tax increase, absolutely. I'll be the first one to, you know, agree with you on that.
So. But then I agree with you, Dale. I think after you come forward, that we need, uh we need to inform the public a little better of our decisions. That's what it boils down to, because when we say we're gonna do this, I bet you ninety percent of the public doesn't realize what the operating expense of the city actually is.
Well, it's easy to poke holes in somebody else's deal, so.
Yeah.
And that's not really what my role or purpose was at night. My idea was, let's talk about why we made the increase. What are we gonna use the money for?
So if you have a better idea than that.
You know, I I think you're gonna give that information back to the, you know, taxpayers, and that's really all it asks.
Sure, that's a fair, but thank you guys.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, yeah. Anita, you wanna come back up?
Yeah, I just have a question. Do you have the budget for the coming year already set, or is it which comes first, the chicken or the egg? But like, these.
This has to come first.
Yes.
And then it's our, we have our, we'll discuss the budget, and then based on what feedback we can, the budget will be passed or not passed at the regular meeting.
Oh, okay. So depending on what income you have to work with, then you create a budget after that?
The budget's created.
It's done.
Oh, it's done. Oh, okay.
Whether we're going to pass it or if we need to rework it more.
Okay, okay, and is that public knowledge yet?
Ledger is not, but uh we can, if you, if you want me to make it.
I just think it would be very informative to people to see what all's included in the general fund when you take the water and sewer out.
Sure.
I think it'll be very helpful. Other second thing I wanna say was, everybody needs to remember that if you own a house, your house value is affected immensely by the city's due diligence of keeping the water and sewer, updating the water and sewer. Nobody's gonna wanna come here and buy your house if you have water breaks every other week, and that's, the infrastructure is not supported. So we all have a personal interest. Yes, our taxes are gonna go up, but we have a personal interest in the value of our home and property, commercial, multi-unit, whatever. This is a lot for my investors to hit, but if their value will go down if we don't take care of business. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment for the R and R portion of the, come on up sir, thank you.
Yes, my name is Rick here, and I'm one of the planning commission, and I'd just like to know what's been paid out of the inflated general fund in the past, what's caused this problem because, you know, uh past city administrator got severance because why I don't know, because he overspent what he was supposed to. I don't know who was all air on city council. Also Patty Boer worked in the city department, she got a severance. Why? And how was it? I know you weren't. It was the previous city administrator and whoever remembers on the city council at that time.
Yeah, I believe this on Tyler, right?
Yeah, I know. I don't know if I can even say why.
So maybe that's what helped drain the general fund.
He's back there.
All right, anybody else like to make a comment about the R and R portion of the hearing? Hey, moving on to the budget comments, um anybody like to make a comment about the budget?
Don't you need to, doesn't he need to close out each portion?
Okay, all right, so kinda you they've mixed together. That's fine, we've already kinda talked about the budget, but does anybody else wanna speak about the budget or revenue neutral or anything? Nobody? Oh, come on up.
I just wondered what this increase, why you could stair step it up instead of all at one time.
That is always an option, but we are also trying to confront several problems due to ten point two million dollars. We need wanted to get equipment so that we can start up road projects, because uh we can't keep doing this chimp seal forever.
Right, but you can't, you can't just hop over the Grand Canyon either.
No.
So little stair steps might help alleviate some of the tension amongst the public.
And that is an option council has, um ninety-four, like I said, is simply the ceiling, it's not the final uh decision. But like I said, we're, wherever if you look at our, if you look at the expenditures of each department, uh it, we're barely scraping by because of inflation, because of equipment costs, because of maintenance.
That Dustin, we talked about, when we had our first budget hearing, we made the comment, it would take this many meals to balance the budget for whatever, the different departments certainly need, and it was over a hundred, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, and we lowered it back, we cut that back to ninety-four. Now, there might be rooms to cut more out of this, but how do you tell like the library, well, we're gonna cut your budget ten percent? Or even just golf course ten percent, and they, people are gonna get laid off basically, but I'm not speaking.
What if you cut ten percent, maybe? What about three percent?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if three percent would help a whole bunch, but it would do a little bit, yes. That was, that's just my explanation of what I, way I interpreted.
All right, very good. Uh anybody else like to approach the podium and talk about revenue neutral or the budget? All right, no one else. Okay, so we need a motion to close public comments.
Sir Mayor, I make a motion to close a public comment.
I'll second. Councilor Hanson has made a motion to close public comments for the public hearing. Uh Councilor Panzer has seconded that. Uh hearing now also favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, our motion carries. So now we need to pass the resolution or not pass the resolution for the revenue neutral rate uh twenty twenty-four dash nineteen.
Sir Mayor, I make a motion to ask the resolution twenty twenty-four dash one nine to the revenue neutral rate.
I'll second that. All right, Council President Coates has made a motion to pass the resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Councilor Aron is second to that motion. Any discussion, debate, concerns?
I just wanna make sure everybody knows, just because we pass the revenue neutral rate does not mean that we are passing the budget. We are just saying we are going to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
All right.
Very much.
Yeah.
So, so in other words, our taxes are gonna still remain high, like you, like I got a note saying what it's gonna be.
We still have opportunity to decrease, we can go below ninety-four Karen, which will decrease what, from what that says. While the likely, yes, your taxes are somewhat above some, but if we don't go in ninety-four, they will decrease according to what we decide that revenue rate is one of the.
And I think the notice she got was that a hundred, right? At a hundred mils, isn't that, so, yeah, we are not gonna be that high for sure. That's what we've already decided, and I think Darcy had mentioned that earlier before second.
Yeah. Sounds like you're not confusing, it's all too much. What I'm understanding you to say is that the revenue neutral rate, whatever that mill levy is, is what you're actually approving right now.
No.
We're just saying that we're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and we haven't given it a number essentially yet.
That's the best case scenario on the revenue neutral.
On your sheet, that's the worst scenario, that's the highest, yeah, that's the highest.
That's the worst case.
And we are hoping to not get that high.
We were coming from fifteen.
Fifty-six.
We started, originally we started off at fifty-six, and we've worked our way down. We're still, if we can get it lower, we're gonna vote, so.
Yeah, the last time we talked, we got it down to ninety-four. So that's a significant decrease.
And what was last year?
Seventy-four, wasn't it?
Yes.
Seventy-four.
Okay, so it's twenty. About twenty-five percent.
Yeah, what that number is. To get the budget where it would be perfect would be a hundred fifty mils, that picked up. We didn't want to let it for a year. Well, no, again, you get, no one can afford that.
Any other comments? All right. Hearing now all favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed, our motion carries. Probably a motion to adjourn the uh public hearing.
Sir Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, Councilor Coates has made a motion to adjourn the public hearing, and Councilor Panzer has seconded that motion. Hearing now also favor say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Public hearing is adjourned, and in one minute, we begin the regular meeting. Yeah, if you've not signed it, we'll sign it.
But, but I'm part of Russell County, there's weather, there commissioner, that today.
All right, let's all stand for the meeting of the regular council for Monday, September ninth for the city of Ellsworth. Let's go and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could observe a moment of silence, we had a city employee pass away this past week, Dale Warren. Um, we'll go ahead and have a, a moment of silence for about a minute. All right, Dale was a longtime city employee working for the city uh, water department. We've got him on our Facebook page. If you'd like to read more, we don't know any of the details yet. Um, but I'm sure we'll update the site, okay, uh, on Facebook. Um, but anyway, we're gonna do our roll call now. Um, so Jessica? All right, Tyler.
Here.
Darcy. Aaron.
Here.
Uh, Don.
Yes.
All right. First item on our meeting agenda is the consent agenda includes the meeting from the twenty-sixth of August, the meeting minutes and then claim ordinance. Uh, that's agenda item report twenty-four dash one seven three.
I have a question on claim ordinance. We're in back California State D I building. What is California State D I though? What's that?
Can we make a comment outside of the conversation?
Yeah, um, let's keep in mind that every conversation in the back of the room, the acoustics of this room are very strange. We can hear everything you're saying. So we can just keep it a little bit more mumbled. That'd be great. Thank you. Which page is that I'm on?
Oh gosh. I just go through all the expenses. And I saw that California it's a hundred thirty-eight dollars, ninety-two cents, account number four, six, eight, three, seven.
Oh, it's Charles.
Oh, okay.
From Wayne.
Yes, okay. That answered that question. It just was a very useful wording and it doesn't stop me where that, okay, it's go. Okay. That answered that.
Sir Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes August twenty-sixth, twenty-four meeting minutes and claim ordinance eight zero one dash zero eight two four. I'll second.
All right, councilor Coates has made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate, any any conversations needed to happen? All right, hearing then all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, petitions and allegations. Uh, these will be other comments. You're, you're still welcome to comment about the, the budget. You've got five minutes and you can state your full name and whether you're a city of Ellsworth resident. Would anybody like to come forward to, to speak? Come on, John.
My name's Johnny Gunnar and I'm an Ellsworth resident. And.
Can we move on?
Yeah, and we're having the American Legion that is having a car show poker run and activities this weekend, um, on, well, Saturday. And it'll run from oh, eight in the morning until two or three in the afternoon. Um, and we have in that poker run, we're bringing people from the Legion downtown. Instead of driving their cars, there's gonna be a level that's coming, but we wanted to be able to drive our golf carts. We have several golf carts to bring people downtown to, that's where the poker runs are gonna happen. So they've gotta go to five residences or to get five cars. And we wanted to be able to transport them down here. So we're asking for one day permit to, to uh, uh, drive the golf carts through, and we'll stay off fourteen highway. Uh, we'll have to cross forty and then we'll go through the residence. And uh, so that's just a request to the league. It was a overlook. We didn't, we didn't, should've been here on the last one, but uh, uh, we thought we better get here today and make that request.
Mr. Mayor, may I request a search of my heels?
Yeah, yeah. Does he wanna come forward?
Mr. Ligo, if you'd like to address the council.
For this, is there a duration? Like what time we just started talking?
Uh, the start, the run is from eleven to two, the poker run. It will be from eleven until two. And uh, again, we're trying to stay off the uh, fourteen highway, to all we can. So.
We've done these before, except for the before, which is like, and like parade. So, yeah, we can allow it for the day if you're willing. So.
As long as he's cool, then I'm.
Okay. Sorry.
Good.
Yeah, sounds good.
Anybody can I add this about my building insurance? Does that fall on the, the Legion then? This is a Legion event?
Uh, I know that the, the our golf carts are, are insured by.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. I need a vote on it or?
I'll get a request of motion, Mr. Mayor. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to allow the American Legion, I guess it's a member, so they're gonna be getting done, members to transport people from the Legion to Main Street downtown from around eleven to two for the uh, poker run.
I'll second that.
All right, councilor Hanson, Hanson has made a motion to approve the uh, transporting uh, or from the American Legion to the downtown area for the voter run. Councilor Renard has seconded that motion. Uh, any debate, discussion? All right, hearing then all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, all right, motion carries. Any other, anybody else like to come to the, to the uh, motion? All right.
Yeah, we got Alan Barley.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, guys, done.
See you. Yep.
I'd like to introduce Alan, because people that don't know Alan, um, he's got a, I need a position he'd like to tell us about.
Well, I, I just wanted to touch base with you. I'm Alan Barley, uh, resident here in Ellsworth. Uh, I'm gonna be the site superintendent for the airport SRE buildings. And so I just wanted to touch base with you. Uh, we got started today. We had the surveyors come in, lay out the uh, the building layout out there, plan it, schedule it. And later on this week, uh, the dirt contractor will be uh, uh, coming in. Uh, don't know yet exactly what day and so uh, I do have a bar graph scheduled and break a little bit tonight, but I can uh, get back to you a few years and have it all this set, that they suspect know what's going, going on. So, this population knows that I'm probably the local contact person that they needed to deal with and, and that's a common people's man and so I guess I call them.
Congratulations. I'm glad they picked someone of their local community to get to that position.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alan. Thanks. Anybody else like to approach the podium and make some public comments? No one else? Okay. Okay, okay, okay. I thought I was sorry, Andrew, I'm sorry. Um, unfinished business, moving on here. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty is the celebration of Kenny Bernard and his retirement. Um, this is more, we've already done it. It's just a matter of, there were some details left out when we did it last year. So.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty commemorating Captain Kenny Bernard. Here's a.
I'll second that.
Councilor Coates has made a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty celebrating Kenny Bernard's career. Councilor Renard is second to that motion. Any concerns? All right, hearing then all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, all right, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the youth outdoor day.
Three stop, Kenny.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What am I supposed to do?
Oh, come on up. Yeah, speech, come on up.
I get in trouble. No, I wanna, I wanna thank y'all.
Really?
He's got a Ross Cameron. He didn't, he didn't.
Yeah.
He didn't do that. I appreciate greatly Dustin, that call. He said what you're gonna do. And uh, hopefully this coming fourth, uh, we'll be working together and.
That fourth lane. Yeah, definitely look forward to. Wanna get a picture?
Of what?
Alan Ross Cameron.
I expected you guys are having a presentation.
No, 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 I don't think there is.
Well, get up and shake.
Okay, all right.
Let's take one more.
So he's excited. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item would be the uh, youth outdoor day. It's agenda item report twenty-four dash one fifty-one.
We're not asking permission for council to allow the chief to give all decisions.
He checked it over, right?
Yeah, he, he said he was good with it.
He was?
And he wouldn't visit with them.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to allow the chief police to issue a special permit for the discharge of pellet guns, bow and arrows within the city limits of the youth outdoor day jeans, carbon news on Saturday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Councilor Panzer has made a motion to approve the youth outdoor day uh, for September, Saturday, September twenty eighth. Councilor Renard has seconded that motion. Any concerns about this debate? All right, grave and all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, all right, motion carries. Um, next item, the amendment to the street closure ordinance, ordinance thirty-one forty-nine.
Still a little blast from the past, Mr. Mayor, permission?
All right.
Yeah, thanks. Um, just closing up loose ends. I wanted to thank Brian Allen. She's helping me audit all this stuff and helping me get caught up. So I think her tremendously for this. But this is back in August of last year where you guys, where the council at the time gave me permission to give me some discretion on the liability insurance. Cause as you know, at the time, there were some events that let's see a little overkill. And so you gave me that uh, capacity to do that. I'm just uh, making that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve ordinance three one four nine to amend the street closure policy.
I'll second.
Councilor Renard made a motion to approve ordinance three one four nine to uh, amend the street clothes, closure ordinance. Uh, the councilor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate, concerns? All right, hearing then all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, next item would be the bed tax ordinance. That is uh, agenda item report twenty-four dash one seventy-two.
More housekeeping, Mr. Mayor. This is stuff that we've already discussed. It's just finalizing the changes the council's asking, man.
Sir Mayor, I make a motion to approve the bed tax ordinance, third one twenty-nine. Thirty-one, thirty-one fifty-one. It'll be thirty-one fifty. Thirty-one fifty. Okay, thirty-one fifty.
I'll second that.
All right, councilor Hanson made a motion to approve bed tax ordinance. There's thirty-one fifty. Councilor Renard has seconded that motion. Any concerns about this?
I can't wait until it's my turn to comment at the end, but where are we waiting? Getting checks written for the time bed tax.
They are actually done. They're waiting for approval. They are hard to get tonight.
All right. Anybody, any other concerns? All right, hearing then all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item, discussion and decisions on parking along Douglas Avenue and surrounding blocks. That's agenda item report twenty-four dash one seventy-one. Everybody remembers the last meeting, we had a pretty active discussion. Uh, pros and cons, restrictions, no restrictions. And we wanna kinda, kinda wrap that up a little bit today if we can. Dustin, you wanna?
I just need guidance. Um, my request is to allow administration to respond individually to business owners because some business owners have different needs than others, especially on the side streets. Cause on one end of the main street, we uh, took their two hour off, but then uh, religion, Mitchell, Ideal Realty wanted to add one to it.
Pleasure.
A pleasure. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Break into a song.
Hey, there you go. No, but uh, um, I'm just, uh, we would like to know, the, the discussions kinda left open and it's, um, didn't know if you, how you wanted me to proceed. Cause at one end, I agree that, you know, especially in front of pharmacies and whatnot, doctors' offices, it'd be nice to have that two hour window there because we've had instances, it'll be mobile park there all day, but is it two, but doing two hours everywhere seems a little bit kill. So. But that, that's something administration and I can handle if you're willing to let.
So basically we're gonna uh, have an under, as requested?
That was my proposal.
Okay.
And it seems to be a lot easier to do it that way. I don't hate on this year.
I don't mean, I'm good.
Yeah.
As requested, refers to exactly what you know.
Well, the administration and I wouldn't make it out of a vacuum. I talked to the police department and I talked to streets and the business owner. Collaboratively. Or group of business owners.
Yeah. If it doesn't work, we can always regroup.
Yes.
Get someone down the road and say, hey, this didn't work. Let's figure something out. So. Okay, all right. Any other discussion about this one? All right.
Can I request a motion?
Can.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll make a motion that we allow our city administrator to make the decisions on the two hour parking and in front of the businesses, side streets as so needed or we asked for.
I'll second.
Councilor Hanson has made a motion to allow our city administrator to have the discretion to handle the parking issues along Douglas Avenue. Council Hanson has seconded that motion. P concerns, debate? All right, hearing then all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, all right, motion carries. New business twenty twenty-five budget adoption agenda, agenda item report twenty-four dash one sixty-eight.
Just need to know what council's pledges was, Mr. Mayor. Do we wanna stick to ninety-four or where, which direction did you want us to go?
Got any little debate here?
I feel stuck between a rock and a hard spot. Like I feel like ninety-four is what we need to do to get stuff done, but I feel like that's a little too high for the citizens.
I'm with you on that. Man, it is a big jump.
Yeah.
That one, one year.
Yeah.
Would you go as far as to consider employees layoffs or?
I don't think so.
So I could be against employee layoffs because we've worked hard to get the good quality employees that we have. And if we lose them, it costs us more to replace them than it would be to maintain.
Yeah.
I'd rather see like a higher increase than a layoffs. I'd rather see like a higher increase than a layoffs.
But is there a way to get ninety-four down without doing that? I would have to play with the numbers and I would have to cut someone else. Okay. Does that sound weird to everybody?
I mean, I feel like it's worth looking at like something like ninety because of we are like, wow, that shit's real too really too harsh. We can still approve ninety-four. It just has to be over to Shelby by after refresh.
Two meetings. We have two meetings. If you want to come right back with this in two weeks, we can.
We do a special meeting.
Well, you know, I should.
Special.
Yeah. So it sounds like the bottom is once you start to cut people though. The top is to bring the ninety-four down, try to work in the middle there. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, it's, yeah. There really it's amazing. It's as much as we can cut. And we don't even have it right now. We're running.
Running really lean.
Clean now.
Yeah. And there and we talked about is our equipment fund. We have no money put back for anything. No, no, nothing. Zero. So we're going to rock the hard part because that money was snatched out before over the other departments. And now we're starting to let them work. So basically we're paying catch up for the last eight years.
And it's not, it's not the end. It's not like every year it's going to be like this. I'm also looking at different options too. Like on the twenty-third, we are going to get a final presentation from enterprise. A lot of cities have been going to uh, rentals of put up cars and stuff.
Yeah.
And um, the advantage to that, if the price is right, is um, we would save on maintenance costs and all of that. So I am looking at various options so we can update our equipment staff, but not paying out the goes. But uh, Lions went that direction a while back and uh, they saved over ten years, two hundred thousand dollars. About adequate payment. So uh, we are looking at ways of again, like I told you through multiple sessions, we are working on improving our internal stuff. Like today, you've seen our improvement with uh, Mariana's work on getting caught up on that stuff. So we are say continuing to save money. You see the water sewer department out there exercising valves, updating equipment as opposed to water breaks. So little inches forward to show that we are making progress and reversing the trend of different things.
I think they got brought up in our first budget workshop. Maybe we need to stop approving like essentially no religion for free passes.
That's correct. Yeah. And just so.
Yeah.
And just so you try.
No, I mean, those little things add up.
Yeah.
You know, I love the idea of training. I think you've done a great job, but it could be we do a training breeze for a year and won't kill everybody, you know? I mean, it just won't.
Well, there's. I would push back on the training because I think training is one of our most important assets and investments on improving. The more training people have, the less we, the more we save over the long term.
Probably then we don't always need to hire outside, right?
No.
Keep your people trained, insert five.
Yeah, that's my ultimate goal is to do more stuff in-house. And so that's why I do invest a lot of training.
Part of this budget, how much are we? Are we? I've never heard. What are we paying people more per year? Is there other wages being frozen? Or are they getting an increase this year?
Um, I have proposed a four percent increase and that is in line with consuming price index, which tracks inflation.
Maybe that's something we look at since uh, it looks kind of, that's better than a layout.
Maybe so.
But if people can afford, keep up with uh, being able to afford, that's also a dumb one.
Yeah.
So these are the trade-offs. We'll have to discuss if you do, you don't want to do the ninety-four today. We gotta talk about all these things.
Right.
Someone's got to go.
Yeah. I feel like we have good staff now, so we start running around with their wages and then
Good.
gonna lose people and ultimately how much more is that costing the city? We have to retrain, recover the time. Over time when you don't have employees. Yeah, exactly.
That's a trade-off. Just have a look at the numbers. We've got what? Two meetings, like you said, and then we can do a special meetings. We've got time. So it sounds like I can do anything tonight. Is that fair to say that?
Okay. Can I have a target? Or uh, direction? You want me to go ninety mils? So Gary?
Yeah.
Oh, that would be what? How much would ninety? They have a little bit left.
Sixteen higher.
Sixteen.
So you can, yeah, that almost be cut it down for. Kind of quite the worst.
Cutting the rate, the increase in the morph, not by four. So instead of being a twenty-five percent or or Dale was saying it was thirty-eight percent, it would be a fourth of that and cut.
So I'd say start that at ninety and see where we end up with the different departments. I will work with Angela and staff to get it down to ninety.
Yeah.
It's absolutely.
Mm-hmm. All right. But she said, there were just concerns to.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And what is the date, Dustin? Is it October first that you have to get that bonus showing?
That's correct.
Okay, so we only have one more meeting in September unless we do a special meeting. Okay.
Yeah. And if we get to, if we do ninety, next budget, I mean, what could we maybe maybe look at?
Maybe a little adventure.
Surely it wouldn't be another sixteen points, right? You know, I mean.
Eventually taper off and my goal is to get the equipment back under control to where we can start giving money back. It's just this initial hump of years of neglect that I would like to catch up from. And then you can start giving back. It's not for.
Well, I think that water deal really that was kind of a hard thing, I think, to understand first how that worked. Now we're sitting here square one. Well, we can, water is not given to anybody. I mean, that's bad. That's what is killing us right now is that.
Yeah, do we?
That's pretty much what.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we incrementally use some of it, which was.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Incrementally.
You know, cause we just basically, we just cut it off. Could we, could we help out a little bit on some funds with it this year? And then ween ourselves off and have a goal next year or something. You know, I mean, cause we've been doing it forever anyway. It's not illegal to do.
Right.
So, but we just weren't taking care of the water because we were using it. You know, I mean, that might help everybody out.
Or a three-year graduated.
Instead of just cutting it off and we deal with it, we all pay whatever percent born taxes.
And one thing I'm.
I mean, I, no, we gotta look at everything.
Yeah, one thing I'm glad that we put into budget is that the recreation funds cannot be taken out of recreation and put over to the library. The library can't be put into the golf course. The golf course can't transfer their money there. So that makes everyone responsible and behave with their own budgets. Well, I made my budget. I guess we can take some money from the library this year. No, we're not gonna do that anymore.
And that's what we would do.
Yeah, that's all the time. Yeah, we're not gonna do that anymore.
Yeah, is that something we could maybe possibly just look at to kind of?
We can look at it.
Pat it a little bit.
Personally not in favor of it, but I get what you're saying.
You know, like.
Even a three-year uh, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, then we'd leave from it.
Right.
You know, that's, yeah, that's.
But we've also got the seven point six million dollar price tag that's going to be gone at a larger.
Yeah, not so much near next eyes, but we're gonna be probably increasing our sewer raise to pay for the lagoons just to do it.
Yeah, well, and it's not just that. As you probably saw in your neighborhood, we uh, we have uh, lift stations that are also. You also want, we also need to update. We also like that, that Matt, that Matt, and this a couple week and a half ago.
Yeah.
Was due to a uh, seal breaking on those. So we got lift stations that need to be replaced or updated, including the prison. Um, we've also got uh, the lagoons that need to be updated. We got, I've still got to get you the uh, for the uh, for the uh, backup generator for the water sewer plant, for the water plant. Um, so um.
Yeah. Well, that generator might have to go bye-bye for a few years too. I mean, that's not kind of KDA team conflict to not have the generator.
That's correct.
Pawns all.
Yes.
I mean, that's a bigger problem, I think, than the generator.
I agree with that.
Yeah, big time.
But still, it's kind of nerve wracking knowing that you only have two days of water if the power goes out.
Yeah.
And my house is burned down. Right. And you don't have water.
When we haven't had a generator for how ever, we've never had.
I can't help Jesus.
I'm just saying.
I know.
We haven't thought of what we're dealing with on money.
The electrical grid is also, but if you don't replace stuff, that also costs money. So part of what that upgrade needs to happen is the electrical grid. Because when that, when the cold weather did hit, or the electrical grid inside the building is what led to a lot of the equipment fried. And uh, so you know, um, those are.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's a lot. That's a trade-off thing. I mean, is there anything else? We're ready to move on, can I? So we're not gonna pass it tonight. We're gonna chew for ninety mils.
Okay.
Where are you? Okay, we're gonna get to um, you know, we're gonna get as lean as we can get and then we're gonna pass something. So. Okay, anything else, anybody? All right, um, next item on the agenda would be the daughters of the American Revolutionary Proclamation for Constitution Week, which is September seventeenth through the twenty-third. So let me go ahead and go and do the proclamation. Proclamation, City of Ellsworth. Whereas the Constitution, United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the framing of the Constitution, United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting improper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which we will commemorate it. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through the twenty-third is Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Daniel A. Finnegan, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Ellsworth, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. In the city of Ellsworth and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us guaranteed to us through this guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Ellsworth to be affixed this ninth day of September, twenty twenty-four. Thank you. Nice.
All the games, September seventeen and twenty-three as constitutional week in Ellsworth.
I'll second.
All right, Councilor Panzer has made a motion to proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third is Constitution Week. Council President Coates is second to that motion. Uh, hearing none, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is. The hydro stop valve order approval. Go ahead, Dustin.
And as you know, we have a nice little mess to clean up and help. Um, and part of the challenge that we had when we encountered that is there's a high pressure line that's sewer line that connects prison to the K-Dog station, to the uh, to the pump hold lift station. And when the seal broke, we had trouble keeping up with it because once the high pressure reversed flow, we were getting it from all areas in that side of town. And so that's what made that really challenging. So the power of act trucks that we had was a huge challenge to try to keep up with it. We finally got it done with the help of contractors. One of the things we would like to do, plus get some bench stock of valves so we can start replacing some of them. Uh, I'll be asking for more, but this is just to get us a nice bench stock so we can utilize the machine we gave us. So we can actually start, we want to insert a valve um, on that line. So the next time we run into this problem, we can easily shut it off and allow our technicians to make the repair side of the chamber so that we don't have all that flow of black water.
I can't believe when they put that lift station, they didn't have to shut off out the surface.
Uh, here, uh, the water and sewer crew agrees with you.
Yeah. And that just makes sense. You'd have to shut off that on service.
Yeah, I asked Brian Bowles to come out. He came to help and we were kind of just frustrated because we went, we tried going to the prison, tried to shut it down and the prison deserves a lot of credit because uh, as you're, as you know, um, I asked for his help and they reduce the flow so we can at least get it low enough to where we can repair it. So it was a nice team effort, but I'm trying to get some tools done so we can get ahead of these problems instead of continual chase.
Can we have money in the budget for the water department for that?
Yes, I'm taking it out of the project, you know, fund.
Okay.
From the water sewer, from the sewer, yes.
So was that the tool? That tooling we got, I mean, you can only use their valves for it. Is that how it works?
That's right.
Okay.
So this gives us six valves. It's not, it's not, it did one valve I'm talking about.
Neither of the ones you got hot tech.
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't have to shut the service down. I can just insert it and move on. It took us about, it takes us about two hours, which when you consider the savings on time and when we paid an outside person, it's ten thousand per valve. We saved good money.
Yeah, I'm glad to see they're using. That's good.
Yeah, I don't, and uh, just so you know, also uh, the, the piece of equipment you all approved for us last year. I've got trainer, I've got a trainer coming out in October for that piece of equipment too, so we can use that locating machine. For us. Uh, I'm not looking to waste.
You know, the training for six grand, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was. But it'll be worth it because all four, all five water sewer technicians will be there for that.
I'm going to approve the sale order going for hydro stop LLC for a total of six valves and their associated parts in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
I'll second.
Councilor Panzer had made, has made a motion to approve the sales order for from hydro stock LLC for a total of six valves and their associated parts in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty. Council Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate? Concerns? All right, hearing none, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion carries. Our final, final item on the new business side of our agenda is the credit card vendor change from Bank of America to Bankers Bank of Kansas.
That's right. So Bankers Bank of Kansas is contracted with our local citizen state bank trust. Um, I've been, we've all been kind of frustrated with dealing with Bank of America just to make simple account changes. They're making this, uh, the last time I tried talking to them, just to remove some staff members and Chief Penny has been a uh, an act of commerce. Um, and um, they want me to go verify my identity. They've never gotten my name and number right since I've been here. And so they want me to go all the way to their closest branch, which based on what I saw, maybe you can point out something closer, but I, because I do Topeka or Wichita. And so uh, at least if we switch to the bank, uh, the bank card vendor here, uh, citizen state bank can handle a lot of our uh, credit card inquiries locally, which should be a huge benefit with us administratively.
If you're still gonna have to call for customer service.
Of course, but just having a local vendor and uh, Bank of America. I, it's just been trying to change anything with them. It's been quite a frustration. So I'm, I, I, I was, I'm requesting to try something different.
We have our credit cards through citizens, the Midway District, and they have added some security things in place for your cards. So you want to probably prepare an entity for that. They've been easy to work with and their customer service is good too, so.
Well, that sounds great. Uh, we did, just so you know, I do have to confront some internal uh, challenges because of one of the people I don't think were aware that to get a city credit card, you have to provide your personal information. I didn't know that because I just mimicked what our structure was, the cards we have at Bank of America. Then they found out about it that I didn't know that they did not know. So we're gonna, I'm gonna have a form to go along with it and kind of mirrors the agreement along with them. The mirrors the agreements that I've already written, the policy letter for as well as the uh, let, make sure they know that what their information is going to be used for, et cetera. Again, in turn, improving our internal processes.
Mister Mayor, I move to allow city administrator Stan Botto apply for new city credit cards through citizen state banks, logic bankers, Bank of Kansas. Close the credit card accounts with Bank of America and to allow Stan Botto sign any necessary documents for the execution of business on both accounts.
I'll second that.
All right, Councilor Coates has made a motion to allow the city administrator Stan Botto apply for these city credit cards to the citizens. State bank bankers, Bank of Kansas, close the credit card accounts with Bank of America and allow Stan Botto sign any necessary documents for the execution of business on both accounts. Councilor Panzer has seconded that motion. Any debate? Concerns? All right, hearing none, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, motion carries. Moving on to department head summaries, code enforcement this year. We don't see him. Okay.
Did you see the tax mailer, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, let me see, where am I? Live holidays, Mr. Mayor. Um, do I have an old? That, this, oh, yeah, I saw that. We're not there. Sorry, my bad. Okay. All right, um, Fire Chief's not here. The golf course, Lieutenant Police Chief. Um, Jeff, is there anything you wanted to?
I sent out the calls from service last month. It doesn't look like it's made on the agenda. This is me to be on. The next one, uh, last month was a problem. There were. Two hundred and thirty-four calls for service responded to.
Thank you. David, did you want to do uh, water and sewer? Okay. All right, that's a, that's a fair explanation. Uh, we've all been there times. Uh, city attorney.
Definitely report, but I'd ask for uh, executive session regarding your credit card, your training client privilege will probably be at least ten minutes for the first one. At the end, at the end.
Okay, and there's another one too. I'd like to request one too.
Okay, well, just.
So I'm, we're possible in a three? Am I right, Patrick?
Uh, I just have the one I asked for.
So three, three. Okay, yeah, there we go. Um, okay, nothing else?
No, nothing else.
All right. City clerk, um, it's twenty-five percent sales tax mailer.
Okay, so um, in the agendas, there's that attachment. That you guys can see, um, we just wanted to make council aware that these are going out. These are. Mailers that Angela worked with, the independent reporter. Uh, to put together uh, an informational brochure. Um, to go out to citizens because we have to renew our, that quarter cent sales tax. This year, we do it every ten years. We've already discussed it. You guys have already approved it. Uh, this is. What? Resolution sixteen that we did about a month ago. Uh, but this just puts it in perspective so that the citizens. Know what to expect. Um, and so you guys know what these are in case you get any questions. But it all goes back to that quarter cent sales tax, um, renewal that we need to do this year.
Yeah, that pretty good. Explained, explained pretty good, yeah. Shows some comparisons.
But that way, if you guys get any questions out on the street, you know what they're talking about.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right.
Let's see, one mill we said was what, uh? Nineteen, nineteen thousand, yeah.
And then this is just a friendly reminder that if citizens don't approve this or they don't go yes on this on the next. Ballot that's in November, um, that percent sales tax expires in June. So we have budgeted half a year receiving this extra, I think, seven hundred thirteen thousand-ish revenue. But if this is not approved by the citizens on the ballot. Um, you lose out on half of that revenue. And then we will lose out on that revenue annually for the next ten years until we get to do this again.
That's about five and a half mils right there.
Yeah, yeah.
So if this doesn't, if this does not get passed, then our budget is going to suffer as well too.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Anything else? Uh, sorry, city administrator.
Other than, other than my, uh. Let me make sure and. The Eleventh Street project, like I said, I've signed. An approval for the plans for the Eleventh Street sewer extension last week. I'm waiting on K D H G. To give approval. I'd really like to get that. Off my plate. But outside of that, I'm just trying to get the budget done. I got Article H that I'm working on with the staff. That should be the final. Chapter for me to pull this out and then I'll present you a final copy of the personnel policies and procedures manual. To council about the staff's gonna. Keep doing a good job of being editing it for me. So I'm pretty sure by the time it's done, it'll be solid. And that, that's what we're doing this year.
All right. Very good. All right, uh, Council Hanson. Councilpanzer.
Yeah, uh. I didn't notice, I haven't heard the evenings. Have we started any mosquito? Uh, spraying or fogging here in the city? I noticed that. On the north end and west east and, and west to west end, golf nuisance, but I didn't know if we start spraying with that.
I know that last weekend we did. Not this weekend, but last weekend. Um, so you do, uh. Do you feel that there wants to be done again?
I, from what I hear from the people, what I know is outside, yes. Because that's a small place, you know, they're talking about West Isle all the time. And really, that's a small price for the city to pay it out with it. And then also they have rain barrels and we have one ourselves. They make little tablets that you can drop in that rain barrel, rain barrel that will not affect your plants. But it also takes control of mosquitoes because you don't, if you look down in your rain barrel, you can see the, it just, it just swiveling like crazy. So we added them to ours and killed that, gave the mosquitoes down. So we all have rain barrels. I think most people do, and that's a mosquito. Just wanna put that out there for people who knows. That's all I have.
All right, Council Johnson, you have it. Elsewhere.
Yes, I've heard a couple things, but I will piggyback on Dawn. If you do not have a rain barrel and are interested in one, contact the N R C S office. Because they should have some and I think they're like thirty-five bucks, so. I think that a lot, but check it out. Uh, okay, I got. Cash only, cash only. Okay. Uh, I got approached by a citizen asking or saying they think they remember there being an American flag at Priestford Park. And would it be possible to get one put up because we've gone to fence there? And then they also said that, I'm gonna get this wrong, V F W auxiliary, I think purchased lights to go on some of the other. Flags since they have to be illuminated. Twenty-four, seven. So there's that. And then I was, I got a question recently about liquor and C M B licenses. And we don't have to talk about this today since it sounds like you'd be here for the rest of the evening. Um, but I just am curious, what's the difference between a C M B license and a liquor license and what does the city approve and what does the state approve solely? So. Would you? So, I mean, that could just be an FYI thing, just in general at the next meeting if we want to. Aaron, can you? It's my ear, Peter, but that way. I'm getting everything from horse's mouth.
All right.
And that's it.
Very good. Council Bernard, you have it. No. All right, Mayor, um, only thing I have is thank you for showing up, the people that did and making comments. It takes, hearing your opinions. Matter. You know, we heard some different opinions tonight and, and I think some. Maybe beliefs got. Swayed a little bit and that's, that's what your job is as a citizen. So. You did what the constitution is praying to have you do. And I appreciate you for doing that, you know, and we don't always have to agree. But we really need to listen. And we listened tonight. And we're gonna go back to the drawing board and come up with something a little bit better for you. Um. So we appreciate that, really do. Um, that said. You wanna start off with Patrick's first executive session for ten minutes? Okay, return to client privilege.
Who's all included, Patrick?
Myself, the administrator, the Albany.
Okay, for the city council, uh, mayor, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I made a motion to go into executive. Session to just, to protect the attorney client privilege and. Protect the public and public interest, right? Student, Marianna.
Uh, attorney client privilege to protect the public interest. More consultation with an attorney from a public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship.
Number two, number two.
Yep.
To include the governing bodies, the administrators, city attorney, um, to come out at six thirty.
I will second that.
All right, Council Coates has made a motion to protect attorney client privilege and the public interest. For consultation with an attorney to the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged. And the attorney client relationship to include the city, the governing body, city administrator and city attorney. Uh, going into session at six twenty and then coming out at six thirty. All right.
If you want one. Right, I think we can get another two. I think I have. I gave her a class, yeah.
She really enjoys your class.
Good.
Yeah.
It's, it's fun. I just talked to a couple ladies at Pauline's Atlantic's birthday, self open house yesterday. And they're like, oh, I wanted to sign in for that.
She said, you tell my best firm, I said, let me just pick mine up.
Yeah, we're doing lots of spots. So I was like, maybe I need to do a class like in the evening that could get some of those ladies that are like. Cause they said, well, we, we thought we were too young for it. And they're like late fifties or early sixties. And I'm like, you're not at all too young. But they do, they still kind of hurt a little bit.
She said, there's a couple of the older men there that have tried their parts.
Oh, they were precious.
Yeah, that's what she said. They try and try and try.
Cause one of them's wife was the first, um, pre-assessment I did. And she's like, oh, my husband's not gonna be able to do this. And I don't think his friend is either. Like, okay, so when she left, I did their assessment and I'd be in their class and I'd go, you know, if you're not comfortable doing this, it's okay. No, I wouldn't do it. Oh, yeah. They're awesome. Once in a while I look at him and I'm like, please help Paul, please help Paul. But they're good. They are. And I feel like you can just tell that their confidence has, has improved. So it just good all the way around. Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to return to tonight's meeting.
I'll second. All right, Council Coates has made a motion and Councilpanzer has seconded the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.